Council come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Got to be able to see the flag from over there. Can you see it now?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst. Butler.
Here.
Carlstone. Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Straylin.
Here.
All right, before we get started tonight, I want to welcome our newest members, the city council. John, welcome. And Harold, welcome. Look forward to working with you, so, welcome. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So move.
Support. Brainerhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I know we had open house. Most of you in here know that Lieutenant Beukeman retires, just did retire. But I wanted to make sure that we took the time to make, have a proclamation thanking him for his wonderful 25 years of service to the city of Pella. You know, we had an open house and a lot of you were there, were able to greet him and welcome him there. But I want to make sure we do this officially. So, I'm going to read a proclamation. Proclamation from the office of mayor. Proclamation thanking Lieutenant David Beukeman for 25 years of service to the Pella Police Department. Whereas the city of Pella has been safeguarded by steadfast commitment and unwavering dedication of its law enforcement officers, and whereas Lieutenant David Beukeman has exemplified the highest standards of professionalism, integrity, and courage as a member of the Pella Police Department, and whereas Lieutenant Beukeman has served the citizens of our community with distinction for an impressive and commendable period of 25 years, and whereas Lieutenant Beukeman's exemplary service has contributed significantly to the safety and well-being of our residents, fostering a sense of security and trust within the community, and whereas Lieutenant Beukeman has demonstrated leadership, resilience, and a commitment to upholding the principles of justice throughout his distinguished career, and whereas the citizens of Pella owe a debt of gratitude to Lieutenant Beukeman for his selfless devotion to the protection of life and property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pella, Iowa, that on behalf of the city council, city staff, and the citizens of Pella, we acknowledge the outstanding service of Lieutenant David Beukeman and extend our heartfelt appreciation for his 25 years of dedicated and honorable service to the city of Pella. It's dated January 2nd, 2024. Thank you. All right, moving on, I would like to reappoint Mark DeYoung as mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem performs mayorial duties in case of absence of the mayor. Mark has been a council member since 1978 and was first appointed mayor pro tem in 1984. This reappointment is for a two-year term. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support. Brainerhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Epstein.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I think I read 1978 in there. That's a long time ago. Okay, I would like to reappoint Mandy Smith as city clerk. Code requires council to appoint a city clerk at the council meeting in January following the regular city election. Mandy has served as city clerk since 2016. This reappointment is for a two-year term. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion?
Do we feel good about this?
I do. I've told her many, many times, she's the best. So all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Randy Bogard as fire chief. Randy has served as a volunteer with the Pella Fire Department since 1985. He has served as fire chief for the past two years. This reappointment is for a two-year term. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support. Lots of support. I'll say, Brainerhorst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to an appointment of executive committee for the comprehensive plan and zoning code update.
Oh yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And what we're looking for this evening is an appointment for the city's executive committee for our comprehensive plan update. Now, we do have the duties of the committee up on the board, but basically they boil down to is we've had four proposals that have been submitted to the city. We'd like to be able to have the committee review the proposals, interview the consultants, and ultimately make a recommendation to the fellow city council and the next consultant that will be charged with updating the city's comprehensive plan. I would also like to state that there's only two committees that's associated with the comprehensive plan update. The first one would be the executive committee that will have this limited role that we see up on the board. The second item that we commonly refer to is the steering committee, and that would be a much larger group that will be made up of members and representatives of the community as we progress through the comprehensive plan update. Generally, when we look at an update for the city's comprehensive plan, it takes somewhere between about, right around a year to update the comprehensive plan. So, the individuals that are being recommended for the committee this evening would be Dr. Spencer Carlstone, representing the public city council. We have Ms. Terry Voss representing the planning and zoning commission. And then as far as staff, it'll be myself and also our planning and zoning director, Mr. Jerry Vitus on that as well. So, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation. We're more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Support. DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion, questions?
Thank you, Spencer.
Do we know that he volunteered?
Oh. Did you volunteer, Spencer? Thank you.
Happy to serve.
He said he wanted to in passing one time. I have to know where he went. All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Epstein.
Motion passed. This time, we have an opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to my phone, state your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
Support. Brainerhorst, DeYoung. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
Motion passed. Our short agenda brings us to an abstract of bills number 2142. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support. Brainerhorst and Straylin, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Dan Straylin.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to have council address this evening? All right, any member of the public have any other business that you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please come forward to microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
John Banstrup, Mahaska County, rural resident. This past election, one of the topics that was discussed is fiscal responsibility. What I hold in my hand is an Auscalusa Herald article covering the last South Central Regional Airport meeting. And on the front cover, we see Mahaska County Supervisor Steve Wanders asking the board to reject a motion and place it for bid on the rent agreements that would bring income into Pella and Auscalusa. During the discussions by the Pella board members, City Manager Nardini pleaded with the board to accept the proposal as did and discourage bidding on it. And I may add that the board did not ask Mike for his input. I asked this board, is it fiscally responsible to do a contract without bidding it? I would say most things the Pella City Council does with a contract. Also, in this article, there are links to 200 pages of correspondence amongst the board. And some of that correspondence, Mr. Nardini suggests the possibility of a 4,000-foot runway, which is roughly 1,400 feet shorter than the current runway, has a possibility to move the project forward. And because of those 200-plus emails, there is an open meeting complaint with Iowa Public Information Board that names Mike, Mark, I mean, Mike Nardini is one of the persons being investigated by attorney, the legal counsel of the Iowa Public Information Board. And because of all this stuff, it's easy to see that when this board does a consent agenda, when the current airport commission is frustrated by what's going on in the city, it's very easy to understand. Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Anyone else? All right, then we will move to policy and planning to discuss the local option redistribution proposal. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. What we're here to talk tonight about is our current, or actually, new redistribution agreement at Marion County for local option revenues. Now, as council is aware, but maybe for those in attendance tonight or those watching at home on Pella Fiber that are seeing this for the first time, the city of Pella's had a redistribution agreement with Marion County since 2007. The previous agreement expired on December 31st of last year on it. And what was discussed on November 21st by the fellow city council was actually renewing the agreement. And at the time, we had discussed proposing the 20-year agreement with Marion County. The reason why we proposed a 20-year agreement is the new local option sales and services tax that started this January 1st extends for 20 years. And so the thought was that the new redistribution agreement would be over the life of the local option sales and services tax. Now, a little bit of background on local option taxes. It's important to understand when we talk about how the tax is actually generated in Marion County. Under state law, all municipalities that have enacted a local option sales and services tax, this would be the incorporated cities along with unincorporated area that are covered in Marion County, share in the distribution of the local option sales and services tax. Now, the figures that we show up on the board when we talk about the generation of it, 64% of the tax is actually generated in the city of Pella on this. And according to the other big contributor to the local option sales and services tax is the city of Knoxville at 28%. Now, when we look at the redistribution percentage, we'll get a little bit into the background of this and how we came up with these percentages. But it is important to note that ultimately what we were proposing to Marion County in our proposal was actually to be able to receive at least 60% of the revenues that we generate under the tax. Now, in order for that to occur, what would have to happen with the Marion County share is they would have to redistribute 12% of county-wide revenues back to the city of Pella. Now, specifically in our proposal, we were looking at, as we proposed to the county in the first two years of the agreement, would be at the current 8% redistribution rate we currently had or previously had. Years three and four would be at 10%, and years five through 20 would be at 12%. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, a little bit of background on this, when we started with the previous agreement and this negotiation's probably occurred sometime right around 2010, 2011. At the time, the city of Pella generated 54% of the local option sales and services tax in Marion County. City of Knoxville was right at 40%. And when we went through the negotiations, both with Marion County and the city of Knoxville, we identified a goal back in 2010, 2011 that stated that both cities would ideally receive right around 2/3 of every dollar that they generated within their communities. And the way the percentages worked out to get to the 2/3 amount was Pella would receive 8% of county-wide sales tax distributions. The city of Knoxville would be at 4% on that as well. And as you can see, and I apologize if my pointer's not working this evening, but in the far right column with that, with the eight and the four, at that time, Pella was receiving about 66% of the local option sales and services tax revenues that we generated. Knoxville was receiving 65%. And that was an overall 12% redistribution through Marion County. Now, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. What we're just showing here is the city of Pella's proposal on this. And, Mandy, let's go ahead and skip to the 2023. Now, in the 2023, this was an estimated total. We believe the actual total for 2023 is closer to 5.5 million county-wide revenues. But as you can see on the estimated totals and what we've been able to track on the actuals, we generate 64% of county-wide local option sales and services tax revenues. According to the state formula, we receive less than half of what we generate. With an 8% redistribution, which would be our previous amount, we'd receive right around 56% of what we generate. And the thought was, to get us up over the 60%, or get us closer anyway to that 65, 66%, we would actually need a 12% redistribution on this as well. And so that was the genesis or the reasons why we proposed a 12% redistribution amount to Marion County. And before I go on and cover the Marion County proposal, is there any questions on the redistribution agreement or how we came up with the percentages?
I just want to make sure everyone makes note where Knoxville is now. At the current 4%, their percentage has increased to 87.89% from 60, 66%. And anyway, just remember that when we get further in the discussion. Because Knoxville's already signed, or signed an agreement with Marion County on 4%.
And that's a good point, Mayor. It's important to understand, when we started the agreement, we were at 54%, Knoxville's at 40. Now, we're at 64%, and Knoxville's at 28%. So the Knoxville percentage of the overall Marion County distribution has decreased over the years. The Pella percentage continues to increase and has every year since the agreement's been in place on this. As Mayor Ward stated, with the current 4% redistribution agreement that Knoxville secured with Marion County, their percentage is closer to about 88% on what they would have. And so they're almost made whole with the local option taxes. Go ahead.
Do we know if Knoxville proposed something different? Or were they content saying, hey, it's like 4% again?
Yeah. They actually, yeah. They, I believe their original proposal to Marion County was a 10-year agreement with the same financial terms. So they proposed to stay in the same 10 years.
And accepted 10 years.
They accepted five.
That vote was a split vote, two to one. One of the supervisors did not want to go the full five years. I think it was Mark Ramey.
Harold, didn't he want a one-year agreement?
He wanted a lesser term. I'm not sure what that was. He did not want to go the full five years. I know that. Well, I'm taking this out of the Marion County express.
I believe he wanted a one-year agreement.
I know it was far less than five years.
It's kind of a nice segue, Mandy. Let's go ahead, please. And well, that shows simply the impact without Pella. And again, based off the 2023 and the 64%, we generate right around $3.2 million of local option sales and services tax that's shared throughout Marion County. So the significance, the key takeaway of this chart is if Pella were to discontinue the tax, it would not only have implications in the city of Pella, but it'd be throughout Marion County. And that's part of the reason, well, that is the main reason why we've had a redistribution agreement since 2007. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, recently, city staff met with representative of Marion County supervisors to discuss this along with the city of Knoxville. And before I get started on the city of Marion County's position, it is also important to note that this issue that we're talking about is just not a Marion County issue. There's other counties in Iowa where cities generate a majority of the revenue, and there's concerns about the distribution back to the entities, and this is throughout the state of Iowa. As far as I'm aware, Marion County is the only county that I'm aware of that actually redistributes a portion of their share that they received through the state formula back to the cities that are principally responsible for generating the local option sales and services tax. So I would say this, and traditionally on this, Marion County supervisors should be commended for their efforts to address this issue with the distribution formula on it. Now, in the discussions with the county, we went over the data with it. And I think the fair, kind of an overall summary of their position is they stated, from their perspective and looking at their CIP, what they use the local option sales and services taxes to fund, they felt that they could not go above their current 12% redistribution amount that they have for both Knoxville and Pella. And they also stated, it was my understanding, the way I understand, they understood the reasons for it, ask, and increase. And they're also appreciative of the city's efforts in generating the local option sales and services tax. There's a feeling of the board that they wanted to stay status quo in the distribution to both the city of Knoxville and the city of Pella. And what was discussed at our meeting is the board, most that they would go up to is a five-year term. And so for Marion County's position on it, they were essentially proposing just status quo, no changes over five years. And so when we look at it compared to our agreement on it, the first thing is that we have a difference in the terms. We proposed 20 years. Marion County proposed five on that. The second item is, is they proposed status quo for five years. And if you recall during our proposal, we proposed status quo for the first two years, and then we went up in years three and four to 10%, and then at five and beyond was 12%. So if you were to look at the difference just over the five-year term that's being proposed by Marion County on this, the difference in this is the city of Pella would receive approximately $500,000 more in redistribution revenues under the city of Pella's proposal than Marion County's proposal. If you're wondering just over the five-year period of time, what the difference is between the two proposals. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. Now, in discussing this matter, we have a couple of options up here on the board. They're not the only options, but this is one of the items that we used to get the discussion started on it. Option number one would be just to accept the Marion County proposal as submitted. And once again, these are for discussion purposes. Option number two, in thinking about potential options and addressing this issue, what staff came up with is, is if you look at, and a lot of the times with agreements, is the parties are often at odds, and it takes a while to negotiate these things. But usually, a good place to start it with is what can we agree on or what have we agreed on? If you look at the two proposals, Marion County has stated status quo for five years. We, in essence of making our proposal, we stated the first two years would be status quo at the 8%. So option number two would be to take an approach that we would continue to negotiate with Marion County on this issue. And that would either be a one- or a two-year agreement, shorter-term agreement, status quo. In the meantime, we would try the efforts to renegotiate a longer-term agreement with Marion County. During this time, we also thought it may be advantageous because we've received questions from council members and elected officials in the past on the tax. And I'll state for the record, the tax is not very clear. There's not an access between where the local option revenues is generated and how it ultimately gets distributed. But one of the items that we could do during this period of time, if we chose option number two, is provide the council with additional information. And specifically, I'll just list, here's fairly two common questions that we have received on this agreement on it is, why does Pella collect the tax if a high percentage is distributed to other entities in Marion County? And then we've also received questions, well, what happens if we didn't have the local option tax? What would we do to replace it? What are options for the city to replace it? Both of those items will take for the research and analysis that we would have to do. But we think if the city council's looking at it, and again, if we wanted to consider options if we weren't happy with the redistribution amount, you would consider other options at that point in time. And we're not proposing this. Once again, these options listed up here are simply for discussion purposes only. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that, Mandy, do we have any additional slides? Yeah, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right. So, purpose of policy and planning is to direct staff on how we want to proceed. So there's two options up there. I'd like to hear opinions about, from you guys, before I give you mine.
Mine is two.
Mike, what happens, you and I both know that this is a big discussion at the state level. And there's a lot of suggestions about this. And there's also some puzzlement from the other 98 counties in the state of Iowa as to why, why this is even in place for us. And this is an amazing gift that that Marion County Board of Supervisors gives us. Because there's no other county that has this redistribution. So first, you know, I want to start off my part of the discussion with saying thank you to Marion County. Because this 8% doesn't have to happen. So what happens if the state determines, you know what, we're just going to terminate this for Marion County, or we're going to go with a standardized distribution of the loss tax? What, what would we do at that point? Is this all null and void?
Yeah, and that's another item that I would say you probably put in the column that the parties have agreed to. What we actually proposed to Marion County is in the event that there's legislative changes at the state of Iowa where the distribution formula would be altered in a material way, that the agreement with the parties would reserve the right at that point to cancel the agreement and renegotiate or consider their options. And that's what we think is the prudent thing to do.
How, does the city, does Pella have to collect the loss tax?
The voters, that's another very good question on it. The answer is no, we do not, we're not obligated to. Our voters authorized the tax in November of 2022. However, at the city councils, our understanding from legal council that the city council has the discretion at any time to pass a resolution that would cease the tax if you chose to do so.
Mike, I know that negotiating this kind of stuff is difficult. And I thought you did a real good job with the county board the day I was there presenting it. I guess one question I have is how, how many other things are we dealing with the county on that might get affected if we push them too hard? Or if we don't, we have to be amicable on this somehow. So, I'm just concerned about the rest of the county, and we all pay taxes in the county too. And I looked at my tax bill, I got a city tax, a county tax, and a few others. And so, and there's only so much money to split up. So, I just wonder, I want to be careful that we don't, that we stay on a friendly basis with the county.
I think that's an excellent point. We like to think that traditionally, we've had a very good, or still do, a very good working- a very good working relationship with Marion County. Some of the other items that generally we're working on, I'd say partnership solutions. Ambulance is a key one that jumps to mind. We've also had discussions on communication system upgrades, too, that I would say when you look at our dispatch services, we perform dispatch for a portion of Marion County and Mahasset County as well. So if we work towards what I would say is solution on the local option, often to other areas that you are sharing responsibility or serving citizens on, also get brought up for discussion as well. And that's a key point in considering the local option agreement is the position of both parties, particularly with the ambulance issue.
What's up? So if we looked at, so the redistribution benefits the city of Pella, right? And you bringing up the ambulance and also the communications, those two items benefit dispatch. Those items benefit the whole county, right? Is there a way to have this discussion where instead of, you know, if we're talking to, if we're talking to the different entities, well, of course, they want to, whoever it is in any negotiation wants to keep as much as possible for themselves. That's just human nature. If me and Lynn were having a discussion about, there's a $20 bill. We're going to discuss about who wants more of it. I'm going to want all of it, and she's going to want all of it. It's the way it is. Is there a way to change the discussion so that that redistribution looks like, not looks like, but actually is serving the whole county? So if we're looking at whatever our budget is for dispatch and for potential future communications expenses for radio and all that, and the ambulance service where we serve more than just the city, we serve a decent amount of the county, is there a way to redistribute the funds towards those things that are actually beneficial to more than just the city of Pella to offset some of the burden that we carry as a city?
The answer is yes. Through any redistribution agreement, that's up to the city council on it. And how we traditionally look at it, serving residents outside of Marion County. And it isn't just, I mentioned too, but the truth is, is if you were to look at any of the city's recreation programs on it, the user fee that we charge to access our facilities is nowhere close to covering the cost. So the answer is yes, that's up to the city council. That's another reason why the local option redistribution agreement is important to help address those areas. But in negotiations, if I think I understood, your point is, if we were to look at and say, the higher redistribution amounts needed to help provide ambulance services or could be applied towards what's viewed as more of it areas outside where we're at a funding deficit and serving rural Marion County on that, that certainly could be brought up and discussed with Marion County. And it's always at the discretion of the Pella City Council on the funding allocations, particularly of the programs we service on that. So the answer is yes.
Well, this might be split hairs, but what I'm saying is, what if, this is a for instance, we keep our current redistribution rate, but the county brings more money to the table for other things that benefit us and that benefit every entity included. So from a pure what benefits Pella, what benefits Knoxville, what benefits the county, stay status quo like they want. But we're saying, okay, we're already, we've had the discussion about the ambulance. And this may be a way to actually address that issue without actually addressing the redistribution, but actually budgeting it further out to share that cost.
We have 8%, right? But that 8% doesn't stay at the same amount. I think I've looked at some of the figures where the dollar bond has actually increased.
It has, yes.
Whereas if we lock this in for two years, and the county suddenly gets a huge increase in expenses for, say, road construction, right now they're repairing the Flagler Bridge, and who knows what other big stuff occurs, possibly after two years, they could say, well, we don't know if we want to stay with 8%. Maybe we'll cut it to seven. That could be a possibility, right?
It is.
As Knoxville looked at it, they weren't sure about continuing up their 4% for five years. So possibly, if we go two years, maybe they won't stay 8% for five years. I guess I see option one as maybe a better option than going two years and renegotiating because there are a lot of roads in Marion County that need to be fixed, kind of like a lot of streets in Pella that could use some upgrade.
I'm going to say this, this is potentially unpopular.
You mean option one is?
No, I'm going to say what I'm going to say could be, will be unpopular. To John's point about staying on cordial terms with the county, absolutely true. We have the bully pulpit as far as what we generate. So if we said, you know what, we're not going to collect the lost tax, if, Mandy, if you went back a couple of slides. So, I mean, if we didn't collect the lost tax, it'd be devastating to the county. I'm not saying we want to do that. But I am saying that's something to consider, that, hey, we're generating a lot. And as our economy grows, the percentage that we put in continues, it's a parabolic curve. It goes up, and the amount that we get actually goes down percentage-wise. The dollars might continue to go up just because it's a factor of percentage. But as it looks, the ratio just keeps getting, keeps getting worse for Pella and better for the county. So there's definitely leverage here to have this discussion, say, hey, if we just decided for even a year, I don't know what the terms are for the lost tax. I mean, that would be rough on everybody, everybody, all entities. City of Pella and the county, Knoxville, all the small towns. I grew up in Malcher, Dallas. I mean, that number back there was like 750% that the smaller towns get beyond what they generate in taxes. I mean, that'd be, yeah, 750% for the rest of the county. That'd be devastating. So my point is not saying that this is absolutely what we need to do. My point is simply, to Lynn's point, they are giving us a gift. However, we're giving them a gift as well. So that's the give and take of this discussion.
But I think an example that we can look at, too, is Marion County, again, is the only county out of the other 98 that get this redistribution. So I look at a county like Johnson County with the Corvill Mall in there, and that is pulling and pulling and pulling revenue, and they get no redistribution. They're not, what was it you called it, the bully pulpit? I mean, look, they've got a much bigger platform than we do. So again, to the original point is, this 8% is a gift. And then to John's point, you know, getting along, working cohesively together, to me, is a really important piece of all of this gift. And for them to say, you know what, 8% for five years, to me, seems like a very, very good option. It's that old adage, a bird in the hand, you know? Because, again, this isn't anything we deserve. This is something that we've gotten. And if you look at, another example would be Jordan Creek Mall and pulling in and pulling in revenue. That small area, but it does not get a percentage back.
That sounds like they're just bad negotiators.
No, no, just to your point, though, Lynn, I think that's, we really can't do, we can't do that comparison because we don't know how the state redistribution works there. They might already be getting 80% of what they generate back through the state. So every county is different on that. Because it's based on, it's based on taxable valuations from 1984 to 86, so.
But there is no other agreement.
No, I agree, there's no other agreement. But there may be a place like Corvill or whatever, might be getting made whole through the state reimbursement so they don't need the extra county.
Through other vehicles.
I don't know. I can't say they do or don't, but until we would know. If you're going to compare that, then you need to know what they get. We know, we know we get, what, 50, 40, what do we get, 48% of back? We know Corvill might get 70% back from the state. We don't know that.
I would say that, you know, we all sit up here now, elected to be for Pella first, right? So I think that's, I need those kind of reminders. We're here for Pella first. So for one, in those two options, one or two, two includes things like, how else could Pella generate something similar? Because I think we can. I believe in Pella. We see in the numbers that Pella generates for the county, et cetera. I think option two, one leaves us the leverage going forward because I do believe in Pella. I think one year, two years, we have increased leverage. It also gives us an opportunity to see whether the opportunities we may have.
I'm not tracking with you there.
In Pella's business interest. So I'd say an option two, picking a one- or two-year agreement at 8%. We are going to continue to grow and climb so we can continue to do this analysis to see how much better off the county would be if we were to maybe go back into lost or renegotiate our position in one or two years. So I think our leverage only improves because I believe in where we're headed as a city.
So you're saying, what option two?
I like, because option two doesn't marry us to an inferior agreement to the cost of a half a million dollars over that five-year term. Plus, it gets us into digging into what else, what other options do we have to generate similar dollars without having to agree to a long-term inferior agreement? That'd be my opinion on these two options. I think our leverage only improves as we grow. I believe in Pella, that we will continue to grow and generate. So it only benefits Marion County to understand where that is generated. And so I think we need to look at our options.
Yeah, I have a hard time saying that I would just accept what we have, based on the original agreement back in, what'd you say, 96, 97?
Yeah, the original agreement originally was 2007. This one, technically, I think it says 2012.
Okay, gotcha. So based on that agreement, if it was to redistribute up to 65% or whatever that was, I have a hard time as a representative of the city of Pella to not say, well, based on that agreement originally, why wouldn't we want to, why wouldn't we want to bring in an extra, where that dollar amount was 500, 400,000 dollars for our taxpayers? It's, we're going to, that's good for the city. So I don't know why we wouldn't want to do that to improve our services, to, you know, keep our property taxed low. Whatever the things may be, it's our job to work for the city of Pella. It's on for option two.
I also, we're talking real money here, and it's a big deal for all of Marion County, whether that be Pella or Malcher, Dallas, or Harvey. It behooves us to keep studying and keep talking. So two.
Any other thoughts?
This has been a great discussion.
Yeah, so it's no secret I've been over to the county quite often in the last couple of years, and I've become increasingly frustrated with the response we get when we go over there and talk to them about things related between the city of Pella and Marion County. You know, we had the rec center discussion, which, based on what the county's done countywide, and you lay the facts, you lay all the facts on the table. The response we're given is that facts don't matter. We're running the county based on emotion instead of facts. And so that's frustrating to me. I'm a numbers guy. Facts matter, I think. So whether it's the rec center discussion we had, or it's this local option tax discussion we had, when you look at the facts, we deserve more than we're getting from the county. And the county, I feel like the county looks at us as a great revenue source for Marion County, but then they don't want to give us anything back. And I'm with Dave and Spencer. Our responsibility is to fight for the city of Pella. So some of these things aren't fun. They can be dirty and nasty. But that, I think we have to try to negotiate the best deal we can for our taxpayers. So I say the 2008, when this agreement was started, brilliant negotiation by whoever did it. Mark was on the council, but I, it's an insurance policy, basically, to make sure that Pella, the people that generate the tax get a better percentage back because the state formula is just out of whack, totally out of whack. It makes no sense. And so I'm strongly in favor of option two, and I think we need to seriously look at, if you think about the tax, the local option tax that we collect here, $3.2 million of it, you know, I don't know, best estimate, 40, let's say 40% of it comes from visitors to our county. So let's say 60%. So that's 60% of 3 million is 1.88 million dollars. Our citizens are paying, so that's what we end up getting back through the lost. So if we just didn't collect the lost, we could, our citizens could pay that 1.8 in different ways. So we end up with the same money. So I think, I think we need to explore that. We need to explore different options for generating money within Pella that we get to keep all of what we generate. The frustration for me is, if you look at the percentages and you look at how it has swung so far from 2012 to 2023, the reason, yes, you know, I was at the county and we talked about inflation affecting it. But one of the big reasons that Pella's percentage continues to climb as rapidly as it does is because we have people investing, investing big time into this community, and that generates more tax. The rest of the county, nothing's going on. So we're growing. We've got people spending money. The city of Pella has invested millions of dollars into this community to help grow this economy. And so we're not being rewarded for that. The rest of the county is, but we're not. And so I think we need to make it a hard negotiation here. And if we have to threaten to not collect the tax in Pella, it should be on the table in a discussion because we're not, I'm not getting anybody over there, you know, listening to the truth and the facts and making decisions based on that. So that's frustrating for me. And I think we have to be, we have to negotiate these things and continue to throw the facts out there. If we don't get any results, we don't get any results. But I think it's important for us as representatives of these, of our taxpayers to work towards that. And I think we need this time. We need to do a one-year agreement. We need that time to do some analysis and find out exactly what it's costing all of our citizens and if there's other options we can do to generate that same revenue for the city of Pella.
So Don, you're saying a one-year agreement or a two-year agreement?
I'm saying a one-year agreement, and then we can do the analysis. That's what, I think that's what Mark Ramey wanted, was a one-year agreement. I think that's what Mark Ramey wanted, was a one-year agreement. He voted against a five-year agreement.
Mike, do you know how long their CIP time for, do they do a one-year or a two-year CIP there? Because that was one of their pushbacks on the meeting I attended, was they already have these CIP dollars kind of spoken for, so they couldn't make adjustments for X timeframe anyway. Do they do a two-year?
They have a five-year CIP, the same as the city of Pella.
Okay.
But it's done on a one-year basis, though.
Yeah, that's correct.
Are we expecting a very different answer in a year from the, can we expect a different answer from the county in one year's time? I guess would be ultimately, to me, the difference from a one or a two-year deal. I think two-year shows a little more good faithness to it, but I think it's, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
Or is the one-year simply for digging into the numbers a little more?
Well, I get that...
Less about the future trajectory, yeah.
Right. I just, I'm just trying to navigate that middle ground. I don't know if one year enough to dig into the numbers. I mean, it would take me 17 to 35 years to dig into that kind of number, how fast you'll be, Mike, but...
Brian's sitting there just waiting.
He's scratching his head. So, I think we have, I mean, I think I'm personally flexible between one or two, hearing what they said. If we feel like they can get, we can get to a good answer in a year.
So, I've been wondering, the parameters are so old, what would, what if we applied the same formula to the new parameters, to the appraisal here and the amount collected here? Where would that, what would that look like?
Excuse me?
See what I mean? If I, if you, the current split is based on something you said was 1984 appraised values and...
Assessed values.
Assess values and something else. What would that split, how would that split work with today's numbers? Because our assessed values have gone up a lot compared to most of the rest of the county.
You're saying, if a state did it?
Well, yeah, if a state, if we apply the state formula to the new numbers, what would that look like? And, you know, then we could ask the state to, hey, let's just step up to new numbers. It's one thing. So, I don't know what it would look like.
Yeah.
No, I think that's a great point. And I think we could probably, I don't know, does anybody really know?
It would be limited to one or two.
Well, that could be done. Does anyone really even know the state formula, other than the state?
Yeah, we've done some initial calculations on that very issue, and I don't have the data here with you, but we'd be happy to share that with council and what would happen. But keep in mind, when we talk about the distribution formula, what we're stating is, if you look at where the tax is generated at, even with the property valuations and updating them, and then I believe 25% is based off your latest population numbers off the census, the state formula does not recognize where the tax is actually generated at, it's the property values on it. And so, we can share that, we could update the numbers and share that analysis. I just don't have them with me on that.
Okay, fine.
So, Don, there isn't an option up there for one year? We're looking at option one is five, and option two is two years, right?
Up to...
Up to two years, okay.
It just says propose a short-term agreement.
Thank you. You know, the other thing we need to think about is both Mr. Ramey and Mr. McCombs are up for election this year as well. So, you could be looking at a whole new board, which might give merit to both John and Don's point.
I say please someone from Pella run for county supervisor. We don't have representation on the supervisor right now. But, you know, the whole essential services tax discussion too, you know, there's been a pretty large group of Marion County people talking about that, and they've gotten nowhere, because what ended up happening is, everybody wanted to use Pella's money for the whole county. And our stance was, essentially, if we convince our citizens to vote for the essential services tax, the money should come back to the taxing jurisdiction where it was, you know, where it was generated. But when you do that countywide, the rest of the county doesn't generate enough to pay the cost. And so...
So, we have the bullet point twice.
And I, I, you know, I don't want to have fights with people, but I want to, I'm going to, I'm going to fight for Pella, is what I'm thinking there in these situations. And I think we're being, I just, I'd say the thing that frustrates me most is, facts don't seem to matter. And that frustrates me. If you look at the, just look at the, how the local option tax has been generated and how it's changed over the years. Again, you're right, they don't, we don't have to have this redistribution agreement. That's why whoever started it in the first place was, that was some good, brilliant negotiation, because it's been here now for 15 years. So, but it's changed, the how it's generated has changed pretty dramatically. And so, that, the formula needs to change.
And let's just carry it out. Let's say, let's say the current trajectory over the last 15 years continues, as far as the spread between what Pella's generating versus what the rest of the county's generating. If, let's say in another 10 years, we're generating 80% of the countywide tax, but the original formula is still used, and we're taking 8%, well then, our percentage of what we're getting back is exponentially smaller yet in relation to the rest of the county. So, it only gets, for the city of Pella, if we don't renegotiate this, it only gets worse year after year after year. As we generate more revenue, and as our economy grows, we continue to get more lopsided in what we're getting back. So, it's, it needs to be, it needs to be addressed.
Well, the most fair, in my mind, the most fair way to calculate the reimbursement percentage would be to establish, let's just say, 60% that, or 60, yeah, 60%, let's say, in Pella, every community at minimum is going to get 60% of what they generate.
Yeah.
Right. Set it that way and not as a percentage.
Of the revenue generated.
Yeah. And then whatever that dollar figure is, is what gets redist, you know, you have your redistribution.
It's a trailing formula that we just know what we're going to get.
Yeah. You know, we know we're going to continue to grow, and our part of the share of it, as you said, is going to continue to rise. So, we just need to protect ourselves moving forward, I think.
Okay. I like that idea that every community would get 70, 60% back, and that would help all these other communities except our share.
Well, they're, everybody would tell us, everybody would tell us to get 60.
Yeah, there they are.
So, I mean, it really only affects Pella.
Yeah, that's right.
Everybody, you know, like, I think I saw, like Harvey, Harvey collected $43,000 of property tax, and they get $39,000 of sales tax because of the countywide. So, so they're getting, everybody, the smaller communities. And listen, I'm not greedy, I'm not trying to be greedy here, because we have all those people come and shop at Pella, I understand.
And they have a work in Pella.
And work in Pella. So, to read, to share it with everybody is good.
Good idea.
We're just, I just think we, based on the facts, we need to adjust that formula. Again, because if we were sitting here doing nothing to help create more tax, that's one thing. But we're invested, we've invested a lot of money. The city of Pella has, our business people, if you think about the last 10 years, how many millions of dollars have been invested into this community, into entities and places that generate that tax? That's a big number. So, we should be able to reap a little bit of higher benefit than we have been before. That's a wild discussion, Mike. Do you have it all written down?
I thought it was a great discussion.
It is a good, I think it is a good discussion.
It sounded like everybody was respectful, learned a lot.
I think, but just to summarize, before we move on, what I tallied here, and Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, four for option two, three for option one, and so, option two would prevail, would be a shorter-term agreement. We heard some ones and twos, and I think the best way we could communicate back to Marion County would be the preference would be a shorter-term agreement, and just let the negotiations continue if that would work for the council.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, now we have some riveting discussion on the city council procedural rules.
Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Duarte stated, what we're here tonight to talk about is our procedural rules. And these are the rules that govern how council meetings are operated on it. And generally, we review these in January of each year. Now, this year, the city attorney did have a few suggestions. And Mandy, if you could just briefly go over the city attorney's suggestions, what's included in the proposed draft?
Sure. Yes, they were all very minor changes. I have her review them every two years when we go through it. Some more clarity, the biggest one that she wanted to change was, there was just a general restriction prohibiting any flags or signs, which has been deemed, maybe not best practice, it's more of, they will be prohibited only if they blocked the view of the audience members. So, that was the most substantial change that she recommended. The rest was just clarifying language.
Which we all got a copy of it, with Mark redlined and stuff. So, anybody have any questions or concerns with the proposed minor changes? All right. So, I think we're good with the proposed changes, so...
We'll have it on the next agenda for formal adoption.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move to work.
Hopkins, Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call a roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?